Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 19th meeting of the Board of Education. It is 7:04. I apologize for the late start. And so, Mrs. Blaia, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And the first question is, Avon Achievers, who is here for Pine Grove to make the presentation?
Yes.
Come on down. And since I haven't asked anyone else to do it, I'll stand with you and help with the presentation. This is the first one of the academic year, absolutely.
Well, I don't think we could have picked anyone more fit than Mrs. Jennifer Greggs. I'm going to ask her to come up. So, I don't know, raise your hand, Poison Girls, if you are in Mrs. Greggs' class. So, how about that? I mean, we're fortunate now. So, this is the unique feature of going into Mrs. Greggs' class. Do you remember what you say when grownups come in, kind of? Like, "It's a..."
Pleasure to see you.
"It's a pleasure to see you," right? Not just say hello. Well, you know, a few years ago, when I became an administrator, we did an exercise together with the other principals in town, and we were looking at character traits, qualities of a teacher. What would we be searching for if we had the opportunity to hire a new staff member? Certain terms came up, of course, there's always content knowledge, things like that. But one word that stuck out for me was elicit a joy of learning. And I think that Jen Greggs really embodies what that means as a teacher. If you enter her classroom, aside from a warm greeting, you're going to see things like people dancing, singing songs, funny expressions. It's hard to walk by her room and not feel the energy. In fact, one thing that always impresses me about Jen is that I don't think there's a teacher who gets more excited when her students achieve something than she does. Just today, we actually had a town meeting practice, and there's a student in Jen's class who's been working on something, I don't know what his name is, but... And so, I pointed this student out as a role model, and the look on Jen's face was like pure joy. And, you know, just at that moment, you could see her, the student didn't see her, but I saw her. And she was just so happy and so genuinely excited for that student. And I think that is the reason why her students are here tonight. In fact, I even heard some parents coming up and saying that their child couldn't be there, but felt that she totally deserved this award. And so, for all of those reasons, Jen deserves this. But I also want to share something with you about last year, something that some of you are very familiar with in this room. And it's actually not about last year, it's actually about the June maybe before last year. So, Pine Grove was in a little bit of a space challenge, we'll just say that. We were having a little bit of a space challenge. And we got to the point where we needed to add another second grade, of course, we didn't have a classroom this year. But we did have one really big classroom. And so, I said, you know, if we could just get somebody to maybe co-teach in that room and be a special education teacher and case manage all of these, you know, special education students in the room, we could really solve this problem. So, I looked at my roster, and I said, "Who can do this?" So, I called Jen in for one of those moments where you're kind of voluntold that you get to do something. But I kind of gently explained the situation to her and told her what it would be. And really, just in a perfect picture of who Jen Greggs is, she said, "Whatever you need, boss." And I don't make them call me that, but she called me that for some reason. And she said, "Whatever you need, boss." And from that moment on, we just kind of went on this journey where we had to interview and hire a colleague for Jen, and this is in the audience tonight, who helped co-teach in that classroom that year. And just, she was so humble about the whole experience, took it in stride, and really, that was just an example of somebody who stepped up and it helped the whole school community that year. Because I don't know where we would put that list, I'd give you the work for your willingness to do that. So, for all the reasons I spelled out before, and of course, all of your hard work last year, thank you very much, and you certainly make us all very proud that you have Pine Grove's support.
Excellent. And at this point, what we do by tradition is, we allow those that came to see the award delivered to leave, and we take a brief pause so that you don't feel embarrassed. And sometimes, the room empties, and that's all right. Next item on the agenda, the Board of Educational Minutes for August 22, 2017.
Should we wait until January 21st or here?
I understand, and...
I think the most...
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
We tied.
Laura Young.
Laura Young seconded. All right. Any comments, discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. There you go. Communications from the public, as everybody knows, we allow up to 15 minutes, but three minutes per speaker. Does anyone care to address the board? Going once? Going twice? All right. No questions for the board from the public? All right. Joseph Arardi, Superintendent Search Process and Timeline Update, if you could come on down?
Thank you. I always felt when I sat on that side of the table, that after the celebration of excellence, the meeting should end. You should just be done, go home. It's just a wonderful start to your meeting, and boy, what a nice tribute to that classroom teacher. Heather and Amir, I haven't met the two of you. I'd like to be able to have a chance to speak with you at some point. I'll arrange that through your principal, because it's really important to have a student voice as we look to find your new superintendent. Hope that both of you have your best school year, too. Board members, let me give you a sense, if I could, where we are, and I think we're in a terrific space right now. I've enclosed for you a couple of artifacts that, just put in a file, hold on to them, and at some point, you may want to look back through them. I was pleased with the collaborative work with the board, with the search brochure. I'm also pleased with the extraordinary cooperation from your building leaders, particularly from Dr. Pattyfoot, who has done everything possible in the moment for this to go forward in such a professional way. Building administrators at all levels, PTOs at all levels, everyone is all in, and they want to do their part to make sure that they're part of the process in a positive way. I've included for you the present roster of meetings that we've had and that we will be having. It will include every PTO, every faculty, four opportunities for the community to be involved. It'll also include an opportunity for me to sit with central office staff, as I've already done with your administrative leadership team. In addition to that, the survey launched two weeks ago, and we'll continue to send out a reminder press release on or around October 1st. And I'm pleased with the survey, and I'm pleased with the launch. Let me give you a sense of where we are with the advertisement for the position. We have sent this week to 5,000 mailboxes of sitting superintendents, the opportunity. We have posted throughout Connecticut. I have regionalized dozens of brochures with messages from my desk to candidates that I believe would be a worthy and a fine fit for Avon. Applications are already coming in, they're coming in from across the country. The search is a national search. There's a heavy focus on the region and on the state of Connecticut, but clearly, it's a national search that has great interest. I shared with you earlier that Avon continues to be, through the lens of the sitting superintendent, a destination district. People are very interested in your work, and they should be. My takeaway, after just being in the community for two or three weeks, I've met dozens of moms and dads, many more moms than dads. I love when a dad shows up to a PTO, it doesn't happen too often, but the parents are really vested into your work, and they're vested into making sure it's a nice fit going forward for their new school superintendent. There's a focus area that, I don't want to take too much of your time this evening, and we'll work through central office, through Dr. Pattyfoot's office. But the last time that I spoke, about four or five weeks ago, we talked about when you would convene as the interview committee to start the process. With the special board meeting that's now in place, which is the Wednesday after Election Day, we're able to expedite that and move that to a tighter timeframe. What appears to work for the district, and I've coordinated the dates with Dr. Pattyfoot, I'm amazed, by the way, as a former superintendent, how early you start your budget process. It has to be the earliest in the state of Connecticut, and that's a compliment, but I'm amazed at that, that you're already in your budget process in November. But the dates that appear to work for central office, if they work for you for the first round of interviews, would be the 14th and the 15th. November 14, November 15. And then potentially, for the start of a second round, would be that Saturday, the 18th. Just if you jot those dates down, we'll send something out through your central office, and we'll look to find dates that the entire board is able to be at. That's our update. I'm pleased where we are, and again, a public thank you to the board, to the administrative team, and I look forward to the conversation I'm going to have with the students at Avon High. Questions or thoughts from me?
Mrs. Rell?
Did the survey go out through its own website, through emails? I don't believe it's a non-parent, I've seen it anywhere.
The survey right now is, if you go on to the Avon Board of Education page, it's a link on your front page. It's actually a special link that says Superintendent Search, and it gives you the community press release, it gives a little bit of information about me, and that's where you're linking onto the survey. That's where it's at right now, it's on the Avon Board of Education webpage.
Do people have to go onto the website to get it? We're not sending it to the...
Correct.
Debbie, do you have a few parents?
No, the intent would be that I want to have as much FaceTime as I can with parents before we did that. We had the conversation, actually, this weekend, that I'd like to have our October 4th and October 11th meeting, send out a press release between those two meetings, and then most likely send it out by messenger to all parents.
Further questions? Mr. Spivak?
Yeah, I just want to understand this. So, ahead of my calendar, that we were going to do the 27th and 28th of November, now you're moving those two dates to the 14th and 15th?
I'm responding from offline conversations from the board in regards to now having a special meeting that was not in place in August. If that makes sense.
Yeah, one of the... Because we had a fairly long period, a three-week period, and I was probably one of those conversations that said, "Yeah, maybe we can move a little earlier." And I was just ruminating a little bit, which is always dangerous, because there is actually a section of the agenda just for that. In terms of the special meeting for November 8th, the bylaws say that the chair can appoint committee members. Doesn't say it has to be done at the meeting or actually voted on by the committee. So, the question is, we could probably cancel the meeting, and I can have the meeting in my head and appoint the three people that we expect to be elected, whoever they may be, immediate upon the election.
You would be appointing people to positions before they took office?
No.
No, it would happen after the election.
No, 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 no. It would happen after the election, but instead of having a meeting to watch me say, "I hereby appoint," I could just simply, the day after, say, "I hereby appoint whoever the people who got elected."
Oh, to our committee?
To our committee, correct. Because it's a chair appointment, so I'm not sure we actually need to really meet, but we can move very quickly then, because we should know the day after.
Not unless... I would agree. Not unless there's an agenda that we need to do, you can't appoint.
I was thinking about that, and I just want to get the feel for the room. Mrs. Young?
I just, the date change, I would have to really understand more to commit to, because I might have commitments to myself, I don't know.
Okay. Well, that was one of the questions, as to whether or not the 14th or the 15th would be a problem for anybody. It works, for me, the next week puts it during Thanksgiving week, which is probably not going to be a big seller, as they say in the business. Mrs. Young?
So, does this work for the administration to have this essentially pushed up? Would it make more sense to push it out a little bit, to be after Thanksgiving? Not have a special meeting, but appoint the committee, and just keep the timeline a little bit more stretched out? It strikes me as being more compressed than the original timeline?
It is more compressed. Well, one of the reasons we have to make sure that we get done in a timely fashion is that I'm reminded of the Cinderella story for our interim superintendent, and at some point, there will be a limit beyond which we can't take her, and I don't want to blow the limit.
So, again, my question is, do these dates work with the administration?
We can ask the interim.
So, the November 14th and 16th, and then if you do the second round on the 18th? Initially, Dr. Arardi was looking at the 21st, that date would not have worked, because we have the my-budget presentation that night. So, I'm sure people don't want to miss that and our board meeting.
We have a lot of meetings at that particular time. I'm just wondering, is there any way we could stretch it out a little bit to allow for more time, if that makes sense?
I'm not sure it makes sense.
I guess my other question is, are we doing it with just the first round and then hiring somebody? Or are we going to do first round, get it down to a few people to do presentations, and then a final?
I think the first round is the 14th and 15th. We would not be picking someone out of that to say, "You're our superintendent." I think we have to do at least one other set of interviews, maybe two.
So, the one, then two, be the 14th, 15th, and then keep the dates we already have, those two dates, and then the Saturday after Thanksgiving, like, is already scheduled?
Right. That's the 18th?
A week after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, because we want to avoid the weekend of Thanksgiving, if we can.
What's currently scheduled is the days after Thanksgiving, right? To do the two days of interviews, and then a Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Right. November 27, 28 is scheduled.
Which may be hard for some people.
The 27th, 28th we already have in our calendars.
Correct.
So, we can change those to the 14th and 15th, and then pick one other day after that. If you want to say the 27th, because we already have that scheduled.
Oh, I guess I just don't... When we did it the last two times, we had the first round, we had a second round, and then we had a final round.
And a couple of thoughts, as you work through the dates. As much as the compacted dates appear to be tight, I think it's also important to understand that it would not be improbable to have your best candidates in multiple searches. And there are multiple searches going on in the state of Connecticut presently. I would suggest for the board to consider that, we had spoken earlier with initially six interviews, and depending on where those six land through you, to reduce that number to no more than three and perhaps two. And those two or three semifinals would come back to you with an agreed-upon problem of practice. And then, on your third round, typically, you're down to your final choice. And your third round is much more around a conversation than a Q and A. You're really beginning to feel to see if it's the right fit. It's an informal third round. That's what I would suggest.
So, with the November 14th, 15th, November 18th, and there's another, the third round is sometime after that?
Correct.
So, we're not interviewing and hiring in three days?
Correct. And again, these are just dates that appeared to... You have a very busy November and December, because once you launch budget, you go, right? So, I'm at, whatever works for the Board of Ed works for me. I just think it's important that we all lock in the same date sooner than later.
Right. At this point, we've been locking too much in advance. So, the proposal is November 14 and 15 for...
Round one.
First round of interviews. November 18 for...
That's a Saturday morning.
That's a Saturday morning. And what would that, what would we be doing then?
Depending on two or three. If it's a Saturday morning and you're down to two, you'd have both. If you have three, you'd have two dates, the 18th and a date to follow.
For a presentation or a second...
Correct.
A presentation, okay.
Correct.
All right. And then, November 27 as a potential final interview date, with the November 28 held in reserve for the time being. Does that work for the board?
Yes.
It feels compressed to me.
Well, it does feel compressed.
And I want to make sure that we're giving, I'm sure we all agree that we're giving, you know, we want to give this the right amount of time. When would you anticipate, if we followed this, when would we be actually, I mean, we could be making an offer to a candidate by the end of November?
That's at the board's discretion. You have a, I will talk about a site visit to your final candidate, but I would think that with that timeline, your visitation, your finalist should be in place no later than the first week in December, with the opportunity for the board to take action before the winter break.
Now, the hope is that we would make an offer that would presumably be accepted no later than the end of the year. Then, most people have a 60-day notice, so that means they...
Or 90.
So, they're not going to show up until March 1st. And that starts getting close to the interim superintendent's Cinderella day. We've stretched her out a little bit, but, you know, we could in fact go a little bit longer, but it's, it usually tends to slow down and not speed up.
When do we get the results of the survey?
Yeah.
And the meetings and all of that?
The original, at least the design on my end, was that with your special meeting, which I don't think you're having now...
Well, we can have it if you would like to have it to do a presentation.
And I think that you should, because it'll give me an opportunity to share the community profile, the results of the survey, and all the information that you'll need. The delivery of the packets to the school board, November 7th is your election, November 8th would be the special meeting. It also will give you an opportunity to get a sense of where we are with final applications. Your deadline is November 1st. Your package, your binders, will be prepared for you and delivered to your doorstep no later than that Friday of that week, which I believe is November 10th. Should give you plenty of time to review the packet, review the information and materials.
Good. All right. So, it'll be a, really a committee meeting?
Correct.
With the 12?
With the 12.
Correct. All right.
I had to have a clarification about the 12.
Yes, Mrs. Blaia.
When we expand our committee to include our new members, what, do they have a voting role, or does it an input role, or what is that role?
I was anticipating they would have a voting role.
If you can't have a voting, a final voting role, they can have a voting role on the committee.
Correct.
On the committee.
Then that board, either September or January, has to actually do their own vote.
Right.
So, really, it's an input, it's to get input from the new members.
Correct. Because the objective is to say, "We've picked a superintendent, here the superintendent is," and three people go, "What do you mean? I didn't know anything about this." So, we wanted everybody involved.
So, notify them about November 8th, so they can prepare now.
Yes. Well, I don't know who's going to win, but I will...
But I mean, they should know to put it on their calendar.
I will raise the issue, yes.
So, we're locking in 14th, 15th, 18th, 28th?
27 and 28.
27, 28, and keep the 8.
And keep the 8.
14th, 15th, 18th, 27th, and 28th?
Yes.
Yep.
You've probably locked in more than you need, but that's not a bad thing.
That's what we do when we hire.
I'm excited to do it. I'm just thinking, this is budget, this is if break, this is...
Well, that's...
Are all the kids coming home?
One of the reasons that we didn't do it during Thanksgiving, because that's where we do our budget, and we didn't want to do both in the same meeting.
And there's no way to wiggle this into the first or second week of December?
Oh, we could. And...
Instead of a four-week process, a six-week process?
Then you're going to have the risk that you won't have someone on board until April 1st. Yes, Mrs. Erle.
I'd like to clarify that I think, or just to clarify what I heard earlier about communications, I'd like to have us not just have the survey on our website, I'd like us to send out a communication through us and through, from, maybe it's you, and to the town, through the town website also.
They will make arrangements to have that happen.
I just wanted to, the communication came from the superintendent's office already. It was sent out by messenger, I believe, to all parents?
To parents. I would like to make sure it gets to all community.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm saying the town website also.
Yeah, they have an email list server.
Those of us that are student-less in high schools, you know, schools anymore, we still should have input, I think.
Sure.
Back to your point.
So, I just want clarification. Will Houston be writing something so that Shirley can send it to the town?
I'll be happy to have you take care of it. We can just recycle your previous message. Since apparently, the last one came from you, there's...
We just made it jamiroh, but we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you feel uncomfortable, I'll be happy to write one.
We can take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
All right. And now, let's see. Student reports. Mr. Johnson, Ms. Monroe, comments, suggestions. Oh, actually, I should probably ask you...
Mr. Johnson, introduce him.
I should introduce Amir Johnson. He's our new student representative for the, selected by the junior class, I believe, for the Board of Ed. And I forgot, and I'm rude, and I apologize, did you folks have any questions for Mr. Arardi regarding the superintendent search?
I don't yet, but it'll be ready, right? So, there we go.
All right.
I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, I know you were saying, like, for us to, so we wouldn't have to attend the meeting, we would just be just informed about it, or logistics can be figured out later.
Amir, what I mentioned when I started the presentation is, I'd like to meet with you and with Heather, with your building administration, to assemble a wide range of students, to have a conversation about what you see as school leadership. I think your question is in regards to, would you be a part of the interviewing committee? I believe the answer is no.
All right. The current plan is not to have you as part of the interviewing committee.
I'm upset.
All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Belling, I'm informed that I may have stepped on your toes, because you might want to introduce Amir Johnson. And, and he's going, "I didn't know that. My toes are perfectly fine."
Yeah. So we, I met Amir last year in the interview process when I was interviewing, and was struck by his really insightful questions, and I think he's going to make a real valuable contribution in the presenting of students on the Board.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
So, the things going on at Avon High School, so there was, there's going to be an open house on the 28th of September. And also, in October, there's going to be, well, late October, there's going to be Spirit Week from the 23rd to the 27th.
And so, for today, as you were walking in, you would see the internship presentation was today, and it started at 6 o'clock, and it ended at 7:00, and it went smoothly. Also coming up is homecoming in October. It's going to be held on the 28th, so expecting that.
What time is the high school open house on the 28th?
I don't know.
All right.
Usually 6:30.
6:30?
Usually 6:00 or 6:30.
6:30. All right. So I'm going to write it in my book, because otherwise I will not remember.
And then it goes till 9:00.
Questions for our student reps on their reports? Thank you very much. All right. Now we're going to jump a little bit, and Mrs. Russack, why don't we do the preschool curriculum revisions? Because I understand you have people's, shall we say, waiting in the wings, and I didn't want to keep them out excessively late.
So tonight, we'll be sharing with you our preschool proposed curriculum, and I have the pleasure of having Jennifer Benson and Danielle Pratt, two of our pre-K4 teachers, here to present this evening and bring the curriculum to life for you. The primary goals of the pre-K4 curriculum vision, revisions, again, are to align with the state standards, to create curriculum documents that provide clarity, detail, and accountability, and ensure that rigor and relevance for all of our students, starting at a very early age. The standard information is the same as I have shared with you for all the other content areas. Just to reiterate that we use the same process for all, and the same with the curriculum, how we design that. In creating the preschool standards, we use the same as the other content areas. The interesting piece with our preschool is we are one of the first districts in the state of Connecticut to do a curriculum for our pre-K4 students. We actually reached out to the state to see if other towns had done that, to gain a little of insight and learn from their experiences, to learn that really no one else had started that work. And the state actually asked if someone could sit on our committee, but then unfortunately their job was kind of eliminated, so she was not on the committee, but in name and spirit only, much to her chagrin. The design, again, it will look very familiar to you. The guiding document that we used are the Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards. These were developed in 2014, and you'll hear them referred to as the ELDS. So if we slip into those acronyms today, that's what the ELDS stand for. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle-
To Jennifer.
To Jennifer, sorry. Who is going to go through what those learning and development standards look like, and these are the standards that we then unwrapped and developed our curriculum for, for our pre-K program.
Hey, everyone. So the ELDS we use with our curriculum, and it's a great way to see the whole child in their different areas. So for language and literacy, I'm just going to give some examples for each one. So for language and literacy, some examples would be looking at book knowledge, knowing where the front of the book is, the back, and then book concepts such as characters, where does the story take place, looking at pictures and being able to notice those type of details. Math is looking into one-to-one correspondence, matching, looking at shapes and colors and those skills. Science is looking at what's going to happen if I do this. So last year, we did a pancake recipe, so the kids are really interested in how we get a pancake, learning the process of what ingredients, and it was really fun. And then also, ice cubes. What happens if it melts? Learning what melting is, you know, the weather, what will affect whether it's cold or hot. And then social studies, a good example we did was farm. Like, what's the purpose of a farm? Not just what's on the farm, but why, what do we need chickens for? What do we need horses for? Cows and that sort of thing. And then creative arts looks into dance and, you know, how they create a picture, what materials we use, paints, colors, do it out markers. And then physical development and health gets into the gross motor and the fine motor skills. So gross motor would be what we call the large muscles, like running, jumping, using those type of muscles. And then fine motor is more looking into the smaller muscles, like how we cut, how we color, how we hold our, our marker or, or crayon. And then cognition is the academic task, looking into some of the math goes aligned into the cognitive piece, and same with the other subjects there. And then social and emotional gets into how they attend to tasks. How do they play with peers? What are their relationships with adults? What are their relationships with each other? And how do, do they notice similarities and differences with each other? So.
And that's the ELDS. The next slide is our organization of units of study. So it's the way our, we broke up our units of study. So I'm going to go through each of them and kind of give an example of what the children might be doing, an example of an activity that they might be doing for that. So growing as a reader, something that's really important to all of us is, we read to our children every day. We think if, if we do nothing else, we should sit down and read a book to them. That's really one of the most important things. And of course, one of our jobs is to get them excited about reading books. You know, school's a fun place to be. And so, so growing as a reader, that's something we do every day, is we do read alouds, we also create class books together, which kind of goes into growing as a writer as well, where each kid has, might have a page, and we'll create a class book about, I think we did favorite food before. And so each kid got to pick their favorite food and draw a picture of it, and then we put it into a binder as a class book, and they love to sit and read and look at their friends' pictures, look what their favorite food was, it's the same as their favorite food, or if it's different. And then we also create name folders for them, so they can help learn how to identify their name, learn the different letters of their name, learn how to form the letters of their name, of course, is important. Growing and measuring is another unit. An example of that is we measure their height and their feet twice a year. We measure their height at the beginning of the year, and then we usually post it up on a door on a wall, so they can compare, you know, who's taller, who's shorter, whose height is the same. And then we also measure them again in the spring as well, so then we can compare their growth. We also, we measure their feet using non-standard measurements. We might use Legos or blocks or something like that, and that's something that we also do twice a year, so we can compare their growth. Shapes is pretty self-explanatory. We have plenty of shape puzzles that we work on. We recently did a shape collage at the beginning of the year, so we were teaching the students how to glue. You know, that's a skill that we teach in preschool, and you really have to break down each small part of it. And we use shapes just so we can kind of informally see who knew some of their shapes and who needs some more shape practice. We also introduced 2D and 3D shapes. It's nothing that we expect them to have a full understanding of, but we think it's important to expose them to some of those concepts and terms that they'll hear in a few years. All About Me is the next unit. That's always a fun one, because we do that at the beginning of the year, because when our students come in, that's what they're an expert on. They're an expert on themselves and their family. And so that's something we're talking about right now at the beginning of the year, and we're getting to know each other. We teach our students the connection symbol. So when someone has a connection, if someone has a brother, and they say, "I have a brother too, we have a connection." They love it. That also goes with growing as a friend, too. That's something that we do a lot at the beginning of the year as well, talking about how to be a good friend to each other. And the connection symbol goes in with that, too. You know, teaching that we have similarities. We have differences as well, but we also have similarities. We also make connections to our books while we're reading them. And then it kind of lends itself to the children being able to make connections, like text-to-text connections later in their years. Towards the end of, or more in the springtime, we focus on changing. So changing kind of has the three subtitles. We do changing my family, my class, and I. An example of something the kids might do is we ask some families to send in a baby picture that they have of their child. And so the kids like to sit up front and present their baby picture, and we talk to them about the differences that they did as a baby. You know, could you walk as a baby? No, someone had to carry you. What can you do now? Now you can walk on your own, because you're, you know, a big kid. So that's one of the ways that we teach about that. The next one is how materials change to create something new. That's always a fun one. Jen kind of gave some examples before. Something in the winter we do is like, we'll bring ice and put ice cubes in the sensory table, and the kids love to play with that, or even use watercolor to paint it. And we talk about, you know, what's happening to the ice, but, you know, the ice is all gone. What did it turn into? It melted and turned into ice, or turned into water. And then the last one is change in living things, which is a really fun one that they always love. One of the favorite things that we do with that is, each classroom, we always get a cup of caterpillars. And so we get to watch, and the caterpillars come tiny, tiny, and so they get to watch the caterpillars grow into big caterpillars, and then, of course, we watch them change into butterflies. And then, of course, the fun part is releasing the butterflies outside. But it's really nice for the kids to have some real-life experiences with that.
So you'll notice in the binder we sent you with the units, that the way we organize the units of study, so for example, growing as a reader all the way through All About Me, the title stays the same, and then you'll see the month out after that. You'll see a lot of similarities as those go through, because obviously we're building the skills over the course of the year, but you'll see them increase in intensity and rigor as the year moves forward. So some of our instructional formats and structures, how do we deliver this content? Obviously, they're not sitting in rows of chairs, and we're standing in the front and delivering. And as you read the overview of the units, it talks about the different areas, like center and a few others. So we'll take you through a couple of these.
So I love seeing these pictures. These are my kids' last year. So for center time, it's very play-based, like other parts of our preschool day. So here, the students get to pick where they want to go play. So we have over, we have the block area, different types of blocks to use, trains, vehicles. And then we have dramatic play, which changes based on our theme. So in this picture, we were doing the doctor and vet office, so they're in their scrubs there. So that changes-
Serious work.
Yes. Serious business. And then also, there's a picture of two girls, we had hairdressing as one, so it was really fun, because everybody was really into that, too. And then, yeah, and then blocks again. So center time, they take their wristband, and they get to pick where they want to go. We also have the sensory table, too, which changes weekly. So it's, they move from one activity to another when they want to leave the station. We get to see their likes, their dislikes, and then we try to encourage kids to try new centers as well, so. And then learning stations. This is when there's a play activity, but there's also two teacher-directed activities. So there is an arts and craft activity here. That's the pancake one over in the corner there. That was a lot of fun. And then we also, we did smores as well. And then we also did, when we were doing recycling, you know, what could we make with a bottle and a milk carton and that sort of thing? So they understand the process, so.
This is table time. Table time is something that they do actually first thing in the morning when they come into our classroom. We have activities that are set out on the table for them, and so they get to pick a seat where they'd like to sit and play, and there's various activities that they use. A lot of the activities are like fine motor tasks, like stringing beads onto a necklace or doing a puzzle. There's also a lot of cognitive tasks. As you can see, there's like some patterning, or some, again, like a shape puzzle they had to create. And then we also usually have drawing open at the bottom right corner. You see someone very proud of his picture. We have the, you know, the drawing available for the students, too. And then next, we have read alouds. Like I said earlier, that's something that we think is really, really important, so we do it every day. Here, for this picture, you'll see it was a little boy's birthday today. So when it's the children's birthday, we don't allow cupcakes for their birthday, but we invite the parents to come in and visit if they'd like. And if the parents would like, they're welcome to read a story to the kids, too. The kids always love that. And then second circle. Sometimes we have a second circle in the afternoon. This is sometimes where we'll do our read aloud. So in the morning, you know, when we're just settling in, we'll do other things like calendar, weather, we sing songs, we say everyone's name and greet everyone, and, you know, usually it's some song way. And so second circle sometimes is when we sit, and that's when we get the chance to read a story. A lot of times, we'll do a movement after they sit and read a story, because they need to be able to move when they're only four years old.
And then sometimes, it's not always on the carpet, like, in the corner there, we're over near a different area of the room, both of them, so that way they can try out circle in a different spot, which they get excited about.
So our next steps, obviously, we'll continue to fine-tune our lesson plans, because this is the first full year that we're implementing every single lesson that's been created. We piloted some of them last year. We'll also place it on the next agenda for approval, and at this point, we'll entertain any questions you might have.
Mrs. Shute?
Do the kids get any rest time?
Yes. They have an hour of rest time every day.
And do they have cots, or how do you guys?
Yeah, we have mats. We have mats that are folded up, and we keep them tucked away, and they each have their own mat with their own name on it.
And do they use the special playground outside where the dinosaur is?
Yeah. Yeah, that's our preschool playground. Kindergarten uses it, too, but with our preschoolers, we just refer to it as the preschool playground.
Got it.
And then we'll walk down the hallway, and they'll notice the big playground and be like, "Hey!"
They get to graduate them.
That's for the big kids.
Excellent. And do they eat their lunches in their room?
Yeah.
They do, yes. And then at the end of the year, we show them where the cafeteria is. I know some go to Pine Grove and some, but we still show them that they're going to be in a bigger room with other friends.
Yeah, but they eat snack, lunch, everything's in the classroom with us.
And parents do the drop-off and the pickup and all of that?
Most, for most situations, yes. Some students take a bus for situations or take a van, but the majority, I would say, parents drop off.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Further questions?
I just think it looks really funny.
I want to go, too. My kids are still do this, like, it's a family joke, they're like, "Oh!" And I have no idea what they're saying, so now I, now I get it.
It's sign language saying.
Yeah, it's a thing.
Mrs. Eroli?
I would just encourage that this be added online, so that others can take a peek if they want to see it. Thank you. It's great.
Thank you.
Well, actually, at the risk of pulling a surprise for you, is that you're on the agenda as proposals for approval. So unless you have a particular reason not to be approved, I would ask if I can have a motion.
Still moved.
Mrs. Rell moves?
Second. Oh, Jay.
Mr. Spivak has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carrie's unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would just like to publicly thank Danielle and Jen for coming out tonight presenting and for their colleagues to honor committee who also did the work, so thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for all.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Great job.
Good job. All right, next item is the consent calendar. Does anyone want to remove anything? All right, hearing none, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still moved.
Mrs. Rell moves.
I'll second.
Mr. India Monaco seconds.
I'm going to eventually get his name right.
There you go. Any, there's no discussion, it's consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carrie's unanimously.
You going backwards to page one, Houston?
I feel like you missed.
Oh, yes, you're right. I skipped page one. Thank you very much. The financial report, Mrs. Mashad, Director of Financial Affairs. Always dangerous for me to take stuff out of order.
We appreciate it.
So included in your packet is the August 30th overview. Typically, we don't normally do an overview for the months of July and August because there's not a whole lot of activity that actually happens. It usually happens at the end of the prior fiscal year, and then we see a lot more activity in September. So there's minimal activity, long story short. And then your full analysis on the big variances that we look at every year, which is the salary variances, will be available for you in October, so you'll be seeing anything related to that next month.
Questions for Mrs. Mashad. All right. Item four, fiscal year 2018-19 budget timeline. Mrs. Mashad, you're up again. Just when you thought you were done.
So last year, you received this budget timeline, your first meeting in August. The reason why we held it back was because we're doing the superintendent search at the same time, and we found dates that were presented were directly conflicting with our typical dates for the budget timeline. So clearly, we went with the superintendent search, taking, you know, the forefront of that. So this is the revised schedule that we're proposing. It is a week later for your budget workshops to sort of, you know, let that superintendent search work out. As you can see, you added several dates this evening, so we're trying to stay out of your hair in November for the most part, but take a look at it. This is what we would like to adhere to.
Questions? All right. Probably makes sense to do a motion to pick the dates. Someone like to make a motion?
Still moved.
Mrs. Zeroli moves. Who seconds?
I think what dates?
These dates.
To adopt these dates, you're saying?
Right, to adopt these dates.
To say we agree that this is good?
Yes.
Oh, okay, second, sure.
Mrs. Shute seconds. All right. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
I just have one question. These, to be determined, these are later in the year. These are not going to be conflicting with our December or November meetings, right?
They should not. They should be post-January. And they're not entirely within our control.
Okay.
In fact, they're not in our control at all.
Oh, I see.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carrie's unanimously. All right. Okay, next item, support services update. Mrs. Mierman?
Yes, one of the things I was asked to was to do an update on family engagement. So I have included, for your purposes, a letter, a memo to, that I addressed to Jeanne and Patty Foot, that can give you pretty much a synopsis of what we are currently doing in district around family engagement. What I wanted to share with you is that basically, each of the schools really spend a great deal of time thinking about their family engagement, and for purposes of just trying to organize how things are done, I talked about communication, the collaboration with PTOs, the school-sponsored family engagement activities, and moving supports for families. Each of the schools regularly communicates with home, and that can look like full school, you know, in terms of school messenger or newsletter, but that also can look like at the personalized level for teachers. That includes parent-teacher conferences. But there are even cases or situations where daily logs might be going home, and that may be based on student needs. For example, maybe something in a student's IEP. The other is the communication that's housed with central office, mostly through the superintendent's office, where, as you know, Friday messages go out on the school messenger to the community. I think my mic is cutting it out on me. The PTOs run a number of social activities. I did not include examples on those because they're regularly posted out there, but I did want to talk about, a little bit about SEPTA. I know that there have been times where I brought SEPTA to your attention. That is our special education PTA. I have to say, they do also a lot. They try to host about one thing per month, and I do collaborate with them in helping them, providing either training and/or connections to resources as needed. I really had a lot of fun actually collecting some information from principals around the various family engagement activities they do. I have to tell you that they each really do a lot of work around connecting families, families to families, as well as families to school. And one of the more popular things they do is a Family Connections Dinner, where the night of the parent-teacher conferences, people are encouraged to come and actually participate in a dinner in the schools. Another, a couple of examples, Pine Grove runs a multicultural fair every year. Boring Brook hosts a movie night. Thompson Brook does a lot in terms of lunch bunches with new students who arrive, so there are lots of different activities that are hosted throughout the school year. In terms of supports for families, you know, this, school districts really, the school district really spends the time talking about what families are needed, and they do it on a global level as well as a personal level with different families. So one of the ways that I know that the schools help out, for example, is transportation might be an issue, and they may be making arrangements for one of our school vans, for example, and our school drivers to go out and pick up families that may need transportation to open houses or parent-teacher conferences. This year, I really have personally the good fortune of really doing a lot of collaboration with CREC, and they have a Family Resource Center that we have utilized. That Family Resource Center is actually housed in the Albany Y area, and they've done a lot in terms of supporting both students and families. They have a tutoring center, they have family outreach, family training nights that they do, and this is a very useful resource for us. I made a couple suggestions around moving forward. I know that in my, one of my updates, I talked to you about the U.S. Department of Education's dual-family capacity framework. That capacity framework is very nice because it talks about not just building capacity for the families, but also the capacity for staff, which I agree is very important. We want to make sure that we're really building both stakeholders groups of capacity. And I think that taking an opportunity to really educate our stakeholders around that framework would be a really good initial first step to talk about where we need to grow it. That framework can then serve as a way of a planning tool for us as a district to talk about how we might continue to enhance what we do for family engagement. The second recommendation that I thought about and put forward is that the Connecticut State Department of Education, in collaboration with the State Education Resource Center and CREC, actually developed a walking, oh, sorry, a welcoming walkthrough protocol. This is a very dynamic protocol that's actually done through a facilitator. We choose staff representation, parent representation, and community representation to participate. So you might choose, for example, the local librarian or a local committee member on one of the town councils, whatever makes sense. And they come together, and they have a protocol that they use to walk through the building, and they look for different things that indicate how approachable the building is, how easy is the building to navigate, what is the friendliness level even in terms of how people interact with one another. Once they gather all their information, they come back and debrief it, and they use what they learn to make recommendations back to the school in terms of improvement. So that's another area that I was suggesting that we explore.
Thank you. Questions from board members? We don't normally take questions from the audience at this stage. Mrs. Blair?
So in a real-life circumstance, what would be, so say a child is suffering from, has a family situation or something, something going on in the child's life. How does that work in real time, you know? So say a friend notices their kid sitting next to them in the high school, seems a little off or is kind of a little sad. How are you telling students about what help is available and what help is available? And do you only, is your purview really more with the IEP-identified kids, or are we talking about a more holistic kind of a program?
So first of all, it's very holistic. It's any child, so it doesn't necessarily have to be limited to children with IEPs. There's no one answer to that question because that really is personalized to the information that the student may be presenting. Certainly, I think on a regular basis, students are, there's broad communication out to families and to students in terms of all the personnel that can be made available to help them. For example, our school psychologists, or maybe the principal or the classroom teacher. And then whoever the student approaches, certainly then that's handled on a case-by-case situation. So it could look very, very different depending on the needs.
Thank you.
Further questions? We have questions from the student reps.
I don't have a question. I just think that the last thing that you said about having someone observe the school and how people are interacting with each other, I think that's really good. It's a teacher.
All right. I guess there are no further questions on that, and so there's nothing to approve. So, all right. And then the next three items are, Mrs. Pattyfoot, Hiring Report, September Enrollment Report, and Salary Funding Overview.
All right, so the Hiring Report, I think it's similar to what you receive monthly, or I think it's monthly. So basically, it's the non-certified staff hires and the certified staff hires, just to let you know the hiring that was done over the summer. Any questions? Put yourself aside, I'm sorry. The enrollment, we're tracking just about where we anticipate we'd be. People are still coming in, but, you know, when people come in, sometimes people leave, and we just have to make sure that the schools are withdrawing the students as they leave. So usually, October 1st is a better indicator of what our enrollment is because September, people are usually still moving, and it's still, you know, there is some fluctuation. As you can see, from August to September, we did lose some students, so hopefully by October 1st, we'll have a better understanding or a better gauge on what the enrollment And for the salary overview, I did ask Heather Mashad to give us, to give me some information on the hiring of a kindergarten teacher over the summer. We had to, we, a kindergarten teacher we added, thank you, and a .4 math teacher at the high school. And this report shows where the funding for the assistant principal, .6 at Thompson And the funding came from the family engagement position, and these changes were made during the summer.
Further questions? Okay?
I, of course, am disappointed. I appreciate that information. Just for the record, I'm disappointed, but I understand.
Well, I know that you were particularly interested in a social worker position, and that's why I wanted to make sure that this was on the agenda, so that people knew that because of the enrollment issues, we had to hire a kindergarten teacher, a math teacher, and we've apparently also shifted $14,000 over to the assistant principal. Mrs. Shute?
My request would be that clearly, these are situations that we need to meet students' needs, but since there was a request to have a social worker in the budget, and we weren't able to honor that, I would ask that you put that back in in this next budget, so it's not overlooked. This is something that's very important to us, and I would appreciate that.
Anything further? So then we have now finished four, five, and six.
And seven.
Yes, seven is all done, so we're up to eight, Chairs' Ruminations. And this was intended to be a discussion. Mrs. Pattyfoot and I have had a couple discussions on the role of the board and the role of its committees and how it works, and I am reminded by a certain scene from Anthony Cleopatra, where there is a discussion going on, and one person goes, "This is a horrible thing that, you know, you're doing this, and this violates all the laws of nature." And the response was, "Forgive him, Cassius. He is a barbarian and does not realize that the rules of his own tribe are not, in fact, the rules of nature." So as a board, we're used to doing things in certain ways. Mrs. Pattyfoot has dealt with other boards, and she's used to doing things in other ways. So I figured that we would have a discussion about things that she thought could be done to improve things, and then we can decide whether or not we'd like to pick her brain and use any of those things.
Okay, well, thank you.
And you've never been called a barbarian politely before, have you?
Right, never. It just occurred to me that when I look at your minutes and look at how your meetings proceed and the organizational structure of the board, that your standing committees, it seems to me that your standing committees should be committees that really work for all of you, and I'm not just observing from, you know, my vantage point. It doesn't appear to be happening, at least the way I see it. And the reason is because it doesn't appear that the work of the committees is coming before the board for action. So the world that I used to live in, there were standing committees that had very definitive charges, and they oversaw the areas, similar areas that you oversee, but they did, they were the working horse of the board, and they also had very definitive times when they met. Usually, Tuesdays was dedicated for board, any board, you know, things that they needed to accomplish. And I just noticed that, you know, it seems to me some meetings are, one meeting is during the day on a Wednesday, and that's probably okay, but then you have Tuesday nights, you have the third Tuesday. I don't know if it was just an anomaly, but one subcommittee meets, was meeting on a Monday. It just seems to be all over the place, and I just think in hiring a new superintendent, that it might be nice to pull, just like you tighten the schedule a little bit for the search, maybe some of your procedures or policies could be tightened up. Because I always think of the subcommittee as doing the work and making motions to have the board approve or accept whatever the work that has been done by the subcommittee. So I don't know how you feel about that.
So, what, how does, this was not intended for action. This is intended for discussion. So what do you all think? Mrs. Zeroli? I can tell you're just...
I don't know. I feel, I agree firmly, strongly, and I feel policy has held to that standard. We approve, discuss vigorously policies and approve them to come before the board, and they're part of, they're probably the largest part of the agenda. So I do strongly agree with that, and I think we tried to stick with a Tuesday also, the first Tuesday, so that we had enough time to do the actual work in between the meeting. So I agree with it. I think it works. I think it's the way it's worked for policy. I know that the chairs have used their flexibility and latitude to when to schedule the meetings. Usually, that's why it's been different timing, and it's, so it's been at the pleasure of the chair to decide when the meetings were, and with the superintendent, when it could work for administration as well.
I agree with your comments, and I think in the Board of Finance, I mean, the Finance Subcommittee, we normally meet the Tuesday before our, a regular board event meeting. Now, if there's a holiday or some special situation, we will adjust it, but when we set the calendar beginning of the year, we do try to keep it on that date.
Oh, good.
And that gives Heather a chance to organize the material, and then afterwards, to have all the transfers and everything set up. So I think we do stick to what you say, although our schedule may have been adjusted sometimes because of holidays, and may have looked that way. And I, you know, value your opinion. I feel like, you know, everything we're going to learn from you, we can use, and then our new superintendent may have some other things to add to the conversation.
Further questions? All right.
Yeah, we'll just go to one more. I think Tina and I were going to talk this week about agenda stuff, so we can figure out where it would fit.
The other observation is that when you design... The other observation is that when you design your committee, it might be helpful to decide on the number, and it should probably be the same for each committee, and then to have alternates. You know, a first alternate and a second alternate.
We can do that as, I think Mrs. Rell observed at the time, when we formed this, it was my first year as chair. And I tried to give people the chance to say, I want to do this. And I tried to accommodate everybody and perhaps went a little bit overboard. So I understand concerns, but the chair will bear those admonitions in mind. Mrs. Zeroli, I think you wanted further comment.
Yeah, I think some of the suggestions that you have, I had talked briefly in terms of policy and was going to talk more about this. I would like to try to take a look at those bylaws really again and think through, are there organizational efficiencies that we can do that need to, that would require policy changes and then therefore would be addressed in the committee and then also come before the full board? The other thing is I have, I felt, and I think Ken or Higgin might echo this, there's some efficiencies that could be done. There's, I think there's some combining of certain committees that could take place. So I hope we're open-minded to what she suggests and brings forward from seeing other places. And we're willing to rethink our structure.
And I think one of the questions may also be to have a clear mission statement for each committee as to what is within the ambit of the committee. Is there further discussion? Mrs. Schut.
I'm definitely attracted to the idea of, say, a Tuesday being board-related business. Just for planning purposes, it allows me to block out that night every week and just know that that's dedicated. So I really like that idea. I think if we could work that in, it would make scheduling a lot easier. So I think that would be a great step moving forward if we can coordinate other subcommittees in that fashion.
And if we can get rid of some committees, then maybe we'll have fewer meetings. And if we have fewer people on each committee, it means that there are fewer meetings to attend. So after all, the structure should support us, not we, the structure. All right, further questions, comments? All right, so we're done with the rumination. Superintendent's update?
We'll just get there. Well, I have to say that the opening on August 30th, I thought was really phenomenal. And I was delightfully surprised at the way staff and administrators are out greeting students on that day. And it was very welcoming. And truthfully, I haven't seen that. I saw it in the paper in another district, but I didn't witness that myself or experience it before I came to Avon. So kudos to everyone, the administration and all the teachers for, especially at the elementary levels, being outside and greeting the kindergarteners and all the parents. It really was a very uplifting and wonderful day. So I wanted you to know that. I know many board members have asked about the new website. And I'm as disappointed as you are because I do find the current website a little bit challenging. It's hard to keep it up to date. It's not a very administratively friendly website to upload information and it's pretty rigid. So I just want you to know that I thought the website was further along than it is. And we have a lot of work to do. The only thing that is really created is the shell. We don't have the pages created for each of the schools. We have some headings done. And so what I'll be doing is working with Heather and some other people at the central office to determine what additional help we need to get the website up and running and exactly who is going to do the work and how it's going to be done and come up with a timeline. And I'll have this on the agenda for next month. And I hope I have better information to tell you about a timeline. It is, there's a lot of work to be done that hasn't been done.
Mrs. Schut.
One of the requests that we really initially made was just to have access to staff email addresses. And we were told that with the current website functioning, that wasn't allowable with what we have. So is it possible to simply have a document, PDF, that people can click on and copy and paste that in an alphabetical way so they can at least have somewhere to go, find that teacher's information, and be able to email without this? The system just does not work. If they try to use it through the website, they never receive it on the other end and you can't actually see the teacher's email address. So that's just a very simple thing that we were hoping you could just put a link to a PDF page at the very least while we're waiting for this one to come up so that parents don't have to feel the frustration of locating those emails.
That is on the shortlist of, you know, it has to get done. So it is on the list. And I've been working with Shirley to hopefully accomplish that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And actually, believe it or not, it's even possible to have the PDF document allow you to click on it. And you don't need to cut and paste, it will actually show up. There you go. All right. Wonderful possibilities. All right, further questions for the superintendent? All right. Now comments from the audience. Come on forward.
Nancy Musich. I just had a question. There are so many children coming into the school system, living in the school system, that have to deal with trauma. And I was wondering if there are any plans in professional staff development for teachers' training to help deal with these children? I have this vision of all the teachers, all on board, reading the same book, all on the same page. Now, Warren Book PTO purchased last year for the teachers, an awesome book, Reaching and Teaching Children with Trauma. With so much money being put out in capturing kids' hearts and, you know, let's be happy and everything else. However, I think that we're missing a point here, that we need to be on the same page of dealing with children with trauma, all different kinds of trauma. And I was wondering if the professional staff development plans for this coming year, are we doing anything about that?
I don't know if they feel that they can respond now or we can certainly have it on the agenda for response next time. It could also be that it's a good point and we'll have to work on it in between meetings, too.
I can get you a copy of the book.
Oh, cool. Excellent.
It's a wonderful book.
What was the name against?
Reaching and Teaching Children with Trauma. We had multiple copies at Warren Book School and some of the teachers are having it. But I have this vision of everybody, I see like a meeting, the staff meetings or whatever, let's talk about chapter four, have everybody being on the same page so you don't go from one grade to another grade and one teacher's doing it one way and other teacher's doing it another way. And it gives consistency to the children. And it gives them, the teachers, the understanding that, wow, I didn't know that the child is reacting this way because of this. It's a really wonderful book.
Right. And I can assure you, people react differently to trauma, but yes.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I can even point you some directions to some people who are more aware of it or are dealing with it with their own children.
Thank you, Mrs. Musich. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience? Communications from board members? Going once, going twice, gone.
Complication was lovely.
Well, there you go. Complication was lovely. That's true, it was. Committee reports and future meeting dates. Alternative resources/Regional Services, Mr. Spieback.
I don't have any here.
All right. Audit, Mrs. Young.
So typically, the audit committee usually does meet sometime in the fall. We are dependent on working with the town. And Ms. Mashad does an excellent job of making sure that we get our draft management letter in as soon as it is made available to us. And I'm sure that we will be meeting sometime soon.
I assume the field work is not done?
It's not even started, is it?
No.
October, okay. Capital budget, Mr. Burke is absent. Does any other member of the committee want to comment?
We haven't met.
Haven't met. Well, that solves that one.
Communications, school climate, Mrs. Blair.
Next meeting is September 25th. And as I said, Gina and I are going to be sitting down and the other two vampires of our little committee will be talking about the upcoming agenda and goals for the year.
What time's the meeting?
The meeting is at, I said seven, but sometimes we were moving it till 5:30. I'll have to check. Is it, do you have it down for seven?
Wait, one minute.
It depends on whether we're having it here in Hartford, too, so.
Yes, it was depending on dates. So I'll have to check the website.
I have it as 5:30.
Oh, gosh, 5:30. Don't show up at seven.
I have it as 5:30 also.
It would, it would mean that you would miss the fun part of the meeting, hopefully.
It's going to be fun. It's always fun.
All right, finance, Mr. Spieback.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 10th at noon.
Nothing to report?
No, nothing besides the initial report we already had.
Okay. Personnel, Mrs. Rell, that's safer executive session?
Yeah, just publicly, we can say we're working, we've been meeting with the administrators, the paras and the secretaries. So we're quite, we meet each other quite regularly.
So you're doing three contracts simultaneously?
We are. And we'll report on more details in executive session.
Thank you. Mrs. Zeroli, policy.
Hi. Policies do not meet in September. Our meeting is usually the first Tuesday of the month and that conflicted with an open house. So the next one, I guess now I've been told it conflicts with personnel. So we're looking to establish the meeting to be Monday, October 2nd, if that works. Or I heard from Deb, I sent it out right as we were starting the meeting. So if that works for the other committee members. I had met with Dr. Pattyfoot shortly after, shortly in September. I wanted to touch base with her with regards to what to prioritize for policy. And as I briefly mentioned before, what we're going to take a look at is a few of the bylaws, in particular committees, standing committees, the minutes. And also we had on agenda preparation consent calendar. So some of the basic bylaws and try to get her insights and efficiencies and suggestions through our committee first before we consider bringing it forward to the full board. The other thing that we still have open is 1250 visits to the school because with a new director of security, I really wanted to know whether they had suggestions or changes to that. Currently, we only have a regulation. Do we need a policy? So those are the items that I wanted to report for the agenda. The other piece that's been interesting is a student has reached out to me several months back wanting to provide input, research that they've done on homework. So I helped with the process, Houston, we talked, Dr. Pattyfoot, and we got the student connected with Jess, Giannini, who's chair, helped chair the Homework Advisory Council. So I think, I haven't heard yet, but he was going to present today. And I encourage that he can also come to policy. Always appreciate hearing student input. So just wanted to let you all know that.
Excellent, thank you. Mrs. Schut, board rep to curriculum professional development.
I believe that our next meeting is October 26th, so I will report in November.
All right. Board rep to the Board of Finance, did someone go in Mr. Burke's place or can someone report?
He was there. I know the one thing they did was the Board of Finance appointed Mike Oligander as the Board of Finance rep for the administrator's contract.
Okay.
And they also decided not to establish the 1% reserve account.
Yes, I understood they, with great carefulness, decided not to discuss the topic.
Yes, it was not discussed.
All right. Mrs. Rell, we've got you down as board rep to the town council.
The town council met last, two weeks ago. Heather was there and did a great job presenting the lease for the computers and went through very quickly. They spent a lot of time talking about a lot of non-board event things, which is fine.
And Mrs. Blair, last item, I believe. You are the representative to CREC.
My meeting is tomorrow.
All right. Okay, so the next item is to go into executive session to discuss the items on the agenda as number 14. And we will have Heather Mashad, Martiello, David, I can't pronounce his name, Batalzuski, and Brian Luba present. All right, may I have a motion?
Still moved.
Mrs. Rell moves. Mr. Schut, did you second?
Mrs. Schut, yeah.
Okay, there you go. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions carries unanimously at 8:28 PM. We're going into executive session. We have to give the cameraman a moment to undo his camera, so we'll take a brief interlude. And thank you very much.